Um, okay, so I am going to call the meeting to order right at six o'clock. Yay for that. Um, and we will start um public comment as well. If anybody joins us, we will hold public comment open. Um. So. Um, I didn't see anything in the minutes.
Nor did I.
I actually had a couple.
Oh, that's perfect.
Okay, um, uh, not a ton. Um, for the May eighth uh public meeting minutes, I actually was in person for that one, not Zoom. Um, and the first part it says in attendance, it was the April one that I was in Zoom.
Hmm, that's right.
Um, so that was a biggie.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um. And I think we just kept it from the month of prior. And then just a silly thing, under committee six point two point one IKL, I just think this should probably be an apostrophe after. Um, new policy updated to incorporate AI as its reality in students and educators' lives, just. Um, talking about their lives, just a little punk grammatic punctuation.
Okay, okay.
But everything else is fine.
Cool. Hmm.
And then do we have? Uh, there was non-public minutes too, right?
Those were the next ones. I can put a header on those, which I did not do.
Did you make take minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, that was great. Thank you.
I forgot, and you took minutes, and she asked me, and I was like, oh, we talked about stuff.
A lot of stuff.
Thank you again.
It's like whoops. Yes, okay. All all of this looks fine to me.
Yeah, why don't I add a header on it, just with the date and everything on it, so it's it's consistent, and that'll probably be unchanged.
Okay, anything else?
Nope. I'll do a motion to accept both the May eighth public and unpublic meeting minutes.
All second.
Awesome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so ma- business manifest and financials.
This is the, almost the end.
Yes, um, before we drive into this, I was just emailing our banking contacts and we guys with the change in Jane's signature.
Yep.
Did we make a formal motion?
We did, we did.
Do, I was looking in the meeting minutes, I just didn't see it in the meeting.
It's it's actually there.
Oh, this, oh.
Yeah, I can show you if you want.
Which which month, which?
Didn't we do it in April?
April.
We did it in April, yeah, it was the tiny meeting minutes in April, because that was pretty much only.
That was basically all we did in that meeting.
Zoom.
So for the, this is the March, hang on.
I was, I was looking in the meeting minutes.
So it would have been the minutes that we approved last month, so it was April fourth, meeting minutes. And, hang on, let me get to it. Weirdly have this crap.
Oh.
Look at this.
So, um. Ms. Walsh made a motion to nominate Bob Schmuller for treasure of New Fields Elementary, Ms. Bishop seconded it under new business.
There you go.
At the very bottom.
Okay, harder, alright, excellent, this is what I needed.
No worries.
Alright.
I was like, I know we did it.
I know we did it.
We had to ask, like, what do we have to do?
I was looking, and I was like, oh, then, because I was gonna have you make a motion if you didn't already.
No, it's there.
So we're good.
It's on the fourth, yep, thank you.
Alright, so included, uh, thank you for signing the manifest. Um, included in your board pack is a current year financial. Um, we just had a little bit of expense added from last month. Um, I did put on here the things, which I saw BMX, so I was super interested. What, oh, that looked awesome.
So they included it in her principal's report, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Did anyone have any questions on the expenses that are there? And then I did also put your impact fee balance at the bottom.
Thank you.
You have an impact fee balance, and you also have um some that expire relatively soon, by the end of um this year, so I put that on there.
End of, sorry, good. Sorry, end of this school year or end of this calendar year?
Calendar year.
I believe they're calendar.
Okay.
It is calendar year.
Because they're the towns.
Mm-hmm, yep, I just wanted to verify that, sorry, Bobby, go ahead.
Thank you for including the balance in there, do you, do we know, like, how often that will get updated, like, part of the, I know you you do it, but like, will the town do like once a year that it'll update?
Um.
Or could it be at any time?
I think it'd be anytime, because I think it's like whenever there's new construction.
Yeah, because there was a ton of new construction behind, not ton, but.
Yeah, so I think whenever they implement new fees, they collect them.
Okay.
And so they collect them in a pot of money for us to be able to use, and then um we have to have something that qualifies for the use of it.
Okay.
Um, I do know the difference, I I I don't know if Chris Hardy worked with you, what qualifies for it, but I know we went through a whole big thing over at Brentwood on what it can and cannot be used on, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I can double check on calendar year versus fiscal year, but I'm almost positive it's calendar year, because we we specifically asked due to the safety project, and there's some that are expiring that. So I do think they expire.
They do.
Perfect, yeah, that's what I assumed, but if it's by end of school year, then.
And I, I also, well, I guess you guys aren't cooperative, but usually there's a bucket for cooperative and a bucket for elementary, but I think New Fields just does elementary.
And I I do recall that in the fall, we, one of the, one of the fall board meetings, we did discuss the specifics of impact fees and what they can be used for.
Yeah.
So we have gone over that.
Yeah.
We can go over it again, too, as needed.
Thank you. I don't have any glaring questions on the.
I just had a question on the transportation, because it, that's. Did did we have unexpected? It's almost five thousand dollars.
So I do know that they added a little bit of field trip transportation, especially for the Aloba trip.
Okay.
Um, that was added by, also, um, a lot of the transportation invoices were done by a previous um admin assistant who had left the central office, and there was a bit of a virgin gap, and then the new admin assistant came, so um I do know there's that was some bill.
Oh, okay.
Relates to special education transportation, and historically, they are, as a vendor, um, late as well.
Love to build.
Yeah, and I mean, I would think you would want to build quickly, but I.
Well, it should be under the encumbered, right? If it's not billed yet, right?
Well, so are this report here, though?
Oh, okay, yeah.
This is actuals and encumbrances, so we would have to look on the actual, because a lot of time, what might happen is also, they might have sent over bills and we paid them. We just had a lower encumbrance before, because we thought it would.
Okay, okay, right, that makes sense.
Any other questions?
So we're projecting sixty-two thousand on assigned funds?
Yes, and then the first forty would go to your trust funds.
Yep.
Um, and so then the projected offset, I don't know if you like terms that don't touch.
Right, no, I know.
Offset to taxes would be um the twenty-two.
Perfect.
Now, we will have things as we finish up the year, um.
Yeah.
Like, for example, we don't usually income or subsidies, so anybody that's out, if there's nice weather, we might have something for subs, um, stuff like that. Might come up towards the end of the year. So we will send you an email when we run those summer manifests, clean up all the bills that we pay. Um, and then at the beginning of next year, we'll let you know how we finished the year compared to how we're reporting to you.
Do we need to have a motion to actually send those forty, because it can be up to forty, correct?
Forty, oh, for the trust?
Yeah.
No, no, that's all part of your voting, so like.
Yeah, that.
It's up to, but it 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 has to, if you have forty available, you have to fund the trust.
Yeah, I asked that a hundred times, I still don't understand the legal part of it, but everybody seems to agree that that's, I don't understand why.
So like, so so the, yeah, so the voters voted to send the forty, as long as you have the forty to send it, so if you have the forty, you have to send it. But let's just say you finished with thirty-five, then it's put in order that they're on the ballot, so like. Let's just say the order on the ballot was the order that's here, you would fund the school building maintenance at ten, you would fund the special ed at ten, you'd fund the safety and security at ten, and then the technology you'd only fund at five. Because, and it has to go in the order that it appeared on the ballot.
Yeah, which is why we re-reversed orders this year, because we had so much in certain ones and not in others on purpose.
I still think the language is odd, but I, but I agree.
And we, the reason we should be up to is because just in case you don't have enough.
Correct.
That um it wouldn't be restricted to say you can only fund this if you have the full forty.
Right.
And so that way it says, okay, you can fund what you can.
There's no, in the past, we haven't done the whole thing all the time, so I think.
Done the whole thing.
Yeah, we had, I think it was one meeting where we didn't fund every single one of them, we only did a few of them, and we had a full, a full amount to go. But that was a while ago, so it might have, things might have changed, so let's just.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm positive if you if you have it up to, you should.
Mm-hmm, alright. Let's go without them.
Yeah. Always ask with Gordon Graham's is just languages.
Um, okay, so.
It's good to follow his suggestion.
Um, I just have one more question, so that you don't have to stay the whole time, but it it it's about the safety project, is the the mill rate, um, did you?
The question we had was, is it per one hundred or per one thousand, it's per one thousand.
It's per one thousand, so did you send in the spreadsheet?
Not yet.
Oh, okay, no, that's fine.
She created the spreadsheet, but I think we're still looking for the breakdown that, for the cost, I'll talk to you more about it, but the breakdown in the cost, a supplement to that, breakdown in the cost for um folks to be able to get a sense of how much their anticipated expenditure would be based on certain real estate values.
Oh, I put that on there.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it was on the third tab.
Oh, I missed that, okay, that's on me.
So there's three tabs, there's the.
She did her homework and I.
Send it to me too, or just?
Not yet, she sent it to me and and I I missed that.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just figured I'd ask while you were here.
Yes, so it's always a.
I'll share with you guys, yes.
Yeah, they always say tax rate per thousand, and so how you get to that is you, it's the change or whatever you're asking for, divided by the entire valuation of the town, which is on the town's MS one, I think it is, and times thousand.
Okay.
And so that's where people always have been taxed rate per thousand, and so on the spreadsheet I sent Ellen, there's three tabs, the first tab was five.
It's true, I'm glad I asked, that's why I asked, it's all good.
Was five year, the second tab was seven years, because I think you went with five or seven years, and so then the third tab um kind of lined them up to each other, so you'll see like they both had the first five years, but then the seven years have two additional years on it. Then I put um like the house value, I think you wanted five hundred and seven fifty, and then calculated the tax per, uh, the tax impact for those houses.
And is the tax impact on that per month or per year?
Per year.
Okay, awesome.
So tax impact is always per year.
Per year, okay, cool, thanks, we'll look at it when it comes, and I just wanted to make sure.
She did her homework, I did not review it carefully.
I have not done all mine yet, so it's okay, it's fine, okay.
And I mean, I did notice it was kind of a high, it was a, it's a sizable impact.
Yes.
Because, especially since you're doing a short duration.
Yeah, that, well, that's, that's what we talked about, was um if if it comes down to duration, we would want to talk about what what our options are for duration, that's, that's good, okay, awesome.
So, yeah, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you.
Do you guys have anything else on financials, or?
Nope.
Happy summer, Molly.
Thank you. I'll get the parking dog.
Um.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so committees.
Yes, we need a strategic planning steering committee representative, and that, the expected time commitment for that is monthly meetings that will begin in October.
What time of day?
That has yet to be decided.
You can have, how are you?
And policy, so.
We all have a committee.
That's what I was gonna ask, so we have, there's three of us and four committees?
Mm-hmm. I I don't mind doing it, oh, if unless somebody really wants it, um, only because I was part of the communication committee, which kind of lent it's formed in, like, lended itself to be part of the strategic plan, so um I don't mind doing that, but it's if anybody is like, I really want to do it.
I don't know, I have an interest in it, but um I also wasn't part of the communications, so if you want to go ahead, I don't have a problem with that, but if you can't make it, let me know, I'm happy to step in.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion?
Oh, I don't know.
Is that something you mean?
I don't believe we have in the past, no, we have not, for committee assignments, we have not.
Perfect.
All right, Jenny, it's all you.
Okay, thank you.
For the policy, can I um just make a, do a quick summary reminder refresher, Jenny?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so.
Go for it.
Just as a reminder, we tape, we did a lot of policies last month, and we did table this particular one, JLCF, and and I think it was good that we did that, because there was language, you know, New Fields is unique among the districts, and that we don't um have the um the school lunch.
Right.
Policy. That being said, I just want to remind uh in that, this box here, the summary, that this was updated um with um particular recommendations from the New Hampshire Department of Ed guidelines, as well as actual some new RSAs in the New Hampshire legislation, so it's not all only related to the school lunch program, which I I think we knew that, but I just wanted to contextualize that. What I did was reviewed it sort of in, I'm sure we all did this too, but I reviewed this in that vein, and I have some suggestions for things that we might want to consider just removing, um, because it truly doesn't pertain.
To New Fields.
To New Fields, and it might actually complicate some things, is my impression.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know if you all.
Let's go for it, let's go for it, yeah, because that's where I was going with my, I really wanted to like sit on it, because I was like, I don't want it to then us not be allowed to do certain things.
And I took time to like go through, because I remember this, this was a very long discussion, and so, okay, so I am going to um.
Page are you on?
Yeah, I'm gonna say what page and section, and I'll just to say that I do have some recommended changes on um page three, but I'm gonna come back to that one. That'll be the last one, because it's a little bit more.
Thanks.
On page four, um, I definitely think that we can remove, and would suggest that we remove E, F, and G. Uh, and I'll rephrase it, I would propose that we consider removing those three, because I think all three of those sections refer to USDA sort of um recommendations that I think are a requirement of this school lunch program, um, and I don't know, for example, that we, at this juncture, utilize those particular standards, which are food choices uh when we go shopping, and I just don't want to put us in a bind. You know, it talks about competitive food and beverages marketing, um celebrations and rewards, Jenny, that was the F, so that was the example of, um, if we were bringing in food for um.
Events.
Events and things, and then G was food sale um for fundraising, and it has to meet or exceed USDA, or smart, it all refers to smart snacks, which I don't know that we reference. So that's sort of the the three that I think if we wanted to remove something sort of uh uh like as a a complete letter, those would be the three that.
Are there any other schools that don't follow, are we the only ones?
We're the only ones in SEU sixteen.
We are, that's what I meant.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so there's that, um, the H and I, um, I think are, from my read of it, does not include any language to that effect, and I think those are reasonable things, to say promoting healthy food.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I is nutrition education, and that, and that has to do with by New Hampshire Department of Ed rules and district policies, so like, to me, those refers to sort of standards that were.
Potential RSAs.
Yeah, um, so I didn't recommend changing those. And the remainder of the things refer to physical activity, which um were general, it's a combination of laws, recommendations from the School Board Association, and I think are the wellness group of folks that got together, sort of supported all of those, and they they don't seem contradictory to anything that we have. So in in summary, the sections, I think we may want to consider removing uh our E, F, and G, and then there's a couple of things under A, like I mentioned, that I think we we may want to consider. Just to point out, D is a New Hampshire law, that it's a weird language, and I, there was like two or three lawyers that are on the committee, the policy committee that we reviewed it, and um that language was what we all uh felt was aligned with the New Hampshire law, and sort of needed to be in there. Um, and then C, I put a question mark, because it does refer to USDA standards, but um I would be fine if we decided to keep that or remove that. So the, and then.
I'm sorry, can you say that last part again, I apologize, I was reading.
Yeah, this was on page four, so C and D were the two that I felt less, I was a little bit more ambivalent about, you know, feeling the need to remove them. D, I think we need to keep because of the law, and then C, um, referred to sort of professional standards, which um with training continuing, I don't know if we do that, um, but it doesn't refer to the smart snack standard, so we could consider removing that one as well.
I think we should keep that one, because even though we're not following, I still think they should be trained and appropriate.
Yep.
And aware of.
And aware of.
Of the standards.
Of the standards.
That's why I put a question mark, I didn't want to strongly.
I mean, I, yeah, I still want them feeding.
I like the suggestions.
Okay.
I do too, what did you say about A?
And let me get, so the, so that that was sort of the more clear cut one, the thing on A that I thought we should um remove.
Yep.
Or consider removing is the fifth bullet, one, two, three, four, five, under school meals, or it says, it's the district is committed to offering school meals that, and then that bullet says meet or exceed current nutrition requirements established by local, state, federal statutes, and then it, that last line about offering reversible school meals that meet USDA, I just feel like that's not accurate, and because we don't.
So you want to remove the last sentence of that?
Removing that that last bullet.
Last bullet or last sentence?
Uh, um, I guess the last sentence, right, because the.
I think it's just the last sentence, because I would still want them to meet the local, state, federal regulations.
Okay.
And then the last thing I put a question mark in, which is ironically, I think, our current, it's black, but I also don't know that um that nutritional information about school meals.
Um, where are you?
Oh.
The last one.
Um, I don't know that that is currently the reality, so.
I don't know, that's a good question. Do you know if that's?
Um, I'll think about that for a second, because I don't know if they can.
Yeah, so I thought maybe we can remove that too, if if we felt that it was not necessarily belonging in a policy.
I think that's good practice, but I don't.
It does say should.
Yeah.
Doesn't say has.
Should be available. Well, and I think it should be available, um, if parent, I think there has to be a way for parents to ask.
That's fair.
You know, especially with ingredients or allergies, that kind of stuff, so.
So maybe just.
I think it's okay to keep it in, um.
I don't believe we currently do that, but it's certainly something to consider.
Yeah.
I I know I had trouble finding the June men- menu itself, I think I might have thrown it out, but it was.
We'll find you the menu all the time.
Um, okay, so in section A, then, the only thing we're proposing removing is that last sentence of the fifth bullet.
Okay, yeah, I think that's fine.
Yep.
I'm, I mean, I feel comfort, I think all of those make sense, and that's kind of where I was going with where my concerns were last time. Um.
So do you want me to make a a motion to um accept JLCF with the proposed amendments?
I can second that.
I will, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Um. So do you want me to mark this up, how do we want to give this to?
Good question.
Um.
Who ultimately?
Who actually does the final edits?
Um, he.
How's it going?
It is, um, Heather Murray does that.
Heather does it, okay.
So I believe that, you know, when in doubt, she listens to the minute.
So since you're part of the.
Yeah, I can contact.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, that would be great, because I feel like we took a lot, so.
I will.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Bobby, for following up on that, that's great, awesome, yay, and thank you for taking all that time, because I do really know.
I remember you were concerned, like, it was a valid concern, so I'm glad we we took the time.
I mean, it comes up every time we talk about lunch money, like, all the things, so it's like, okay, so that's good. Okay, super superintendent evaluation committee, um, there really isn't an update, other, I mean, we we met, we gave in public, we gave Esther her evaluation, um.
You haven't met yet again, have you?
No, we won't meet again until fall.
Yeah.
Um, and uh the chair and um two representatives from the committee are going, are are either have met or are going to meet with her to go over details.
Yeah, that was from, we haven't had any feedback from, okay, that, all right.
No, that's that's the only update I have, it's basically what you guys had in in the joint board meeting, so that was that. Um, safety and security.
I have an update, so the safety and security um meeting uh was held in late May. A couple of updates from that, um, we're gonna be doing a reunification training, um, sorry, they did a reunification training for about a hundred people from districts around the region, it wasn't just a SEU sixteen, that was very successful. Um, there's about seven or eight different districts that participated. Um, in any kind of issue that might arise, the reason other districts are involved is because they will come in and start supporting um SEU sixteen if something um untoward happens. Um, the one thing that is going to be really important to reemphasize, if anything does happen, and you have to go to a site to be re-unified with your child, as a parent or as a caregiver, you need to bring a picture ID to pick your child up, so I just wanted to make sure that that is reiterated, um, I know that the, you know, Suzie and everybody else keeps saying that, but it's always something to um reiterate over and over again.
Definitely. How are we communicating that out to parents? Do you know?
Um, in terms of the follow-up from the reunification training?
Yeah, like, I I mean, as far as like, to know that they need to bring a, an ID, or, you know, as a parent, and if I get a call or a, or an alert, or I see something, what what is my job as a parent?
Yeah, I will speak to Suzie about that, we haven't yet, as an administrative team, from SEU sixteen, debriefed that reunification training, to talk about, you know, how it will um roll out specifically, so I would, we can do both of that, we need to debrief that as a group, and then also I'll touch base with Suzie about the specifics in terms of.
I think especially, I mean, I just having sat on the safety committee before too, I've asked the same question. Um, I think, especially as we get, go into the fall with new new parents and new.
Mm-hmm.
It might be something good to communicate out at the beginning.
One of the things to note is that in September, they're going to be putting out a communication to all parents.
One school.
Day. Um, day would be, there's days, a good question.
I think that's that's part of her.
So that is the, so the, this will be communicated out to parents in the new school year.
Perfect.
Um, there is a homeland security audit update um for EHS and uh Exeter Elementary, which does not apply to us, so I'm just gonna skip over that. Um, some schools are getting quotes for an audio equipment system, NES is not one of those schools, so not applicable to us. Um, there was an update on evacuation attendance for Main Street School, again, not um appropriate for us. However, New Fields is going to be using NES this summer for critical incident training, so um they, the training will include SWAT team participation. The New Fields Police Department will put out a notice to the public when this happens. One of the things I don't know, um, and Esther and I talked about, is if they're going to be using the fields at all, because that is not school property. So um she's looking into that.
Jenny, are they planning on being inside, do you think?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, there was a grant for surveillance upgrades to um Exeter Elementary.
Is, I'm sorry, can you go back, are, is the fire department in part of that critical incident training too, or just?
Just police department right now. As far as I'm aware.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the other updates that was brought up is that there's still a challenge with some internal communications between first responders um and the schools, NES was not on that list, um, unsurprisingly, with the fire department and the police department being. Um, unsurprisingly, with the fire department and the police department being so close, um it's really not been an issue, but. With other schools, it has been, so they're looking into kind of what um what can be done to remedy that. And then the last thing is transportation, so first student still needs drivers, so if there's anybody in the public that would. Like to be able to um become a bus driver, they are absolutely um interested in talking to you. Those are the updates. Any questions that may or may not have answers to? Nope, okay. There you go.
Okay, Dean's theory. Principals report. Suzie gave us a principals report? Would you have something to?
Um, I don't, you know, I I reviewed it with her, um in light of the fact that she wasn't able to be here today. You know, I think it's what, you know, some of the things that she really wanted to highlight were, you know, just the. The SAS scores that have come in for folks to, you know, to take a look at, especially um on page two. Just to note the growth from beginning of the year to end of the year with regards to, um you know, the. The um, when you look at the green especially, that's where we want our students to be. Um, the green with the hashtags is, hold on, I need to move my glasses.
Met or above.
At or above grade level, that's what I thought, just wanted to double check. And then the solid green is um at grade level or, yeah, early on grade level. Um, so just to note that growth, and you know, obviously, we're always mindful of the fact that we want, there's more growth to be had. Uh but nonetheless, both Suzie and I feel really confident about the growth that was made this year. Okay, overall, it's been a really strong year for New Fields.
Are we looking at, I know this came up last year when we were looking at these scores, um are we looking at? Like class over class and where they kind of fall um year over year?
Yes, Suzie and I have that data.
And have we, have we seen some growth there?
Yes, definitely.
Cause I I know like.
We've noted some trends with regards to class and classes year to year and how they're performing. And how we need to adjust, you know, perhaps our curriculum strategies and whatnot year to year based on that data.
Okay.
Yeah, I feel like we saw that earlier this year, remember what the um, there was a graph, I remember diagonal.
Yes, I think we typically review that in the fall, because right now, not all of the scores are out yet, right, so. Once we have all of them in the fall, I think we'll do a more comprehensive overview of the data.
Yeah, I was just curious, cause you know, sometimes when you're looking year over year, you're not necessarily looking class over class, so it's always interesting to see. More.
Definitely to drill down on the data.
Drill down a little bit more, okay.
Especially since each of the classes are so small, um it can really be quite a swing from one to the next. Um, are we doing anything about um any summer? Since we're coming right into the summer, summer programming, summer, you know, summer reading programs, things along those lines, should be able to. You know, keep these as close to where they are right now for when they start next year.
Um, not to my knowledge, that's a question for Suzie, I mean, I know obviously we have. You know, extended school year programming for students with disabilities who qualify for that, but in terms of general summer. Programming, I don't believe we have.
In the, in the programming, the, um, just, sorry, I only, I only know, cause I know about it, but the extended. School year is different than it's been in the past, it's actually gonna be at Main Street School.
Lincoln Street.
I mean, Lincoln Street, sorry, I knew it was one of the two.
That's right.
At Lincoln Street, and it's, it's half a day instead of just a half hour or an hour, so it's a lot more comprehensive.
Oh, cool. Is it a half a day every day or half a day, four days?
Three days, three days a week. Which I purposely.
Is there transportation to that, do you know?
There is transportation if you.
Oh wow.
Need it.
And again, that's for students with disabilities to require that as part of their, you know, their individualized education. Program in terms of their free appropriate public education.
I think it's worth mentioning though, cause it's very different than it's been in the past, because it's, which is good.
Absolutely, yeah, so it is.
But there's, there's no thing, nothing quite yet, especially for the older grades for like that summer slump type.
Not to my knowledge, but I will certainly follow up with Suzie.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be cool to see what what could be done, cause these are, you know, on the upswing. And you know, those two months off are fantastic, but they're also. It'd be nice to keep them stable as possible through that period. Cool, thank you.
Ellen, do we have any, I was looking at the um population of the enrollment, it's pretty consistent throughout this past year, do we know? What um preliminary numbers are for kindergarten?
I do not have those numbers.
I thought Suzie said the last meeting was like fourteen.
Okay.
Between fourteen and sixteen.
Okay.
I didn't know it was obviously gonna change.
I did not recall the specifics. I do recall that it is, you know, based on what she has said, that it's nothing out of the ordinary.
Yeah, okay, just.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, and the weather held out for field day today. I was like, please don't rain, please don't rain, please don't rain, please don't rain.
I was like, it's never fun when field day rains.
Okay, anything else on the principals report?
I don't have anything, that's great.
Okay, so new business, superintendent doesn't need authority to hire over the summer, so we need to vote on that, correct?
Yes, I think there's a motion made. To make it official.
So I will make a motion to allow, it's it's you, right?
Yes.
Ellen, our superintendent doesn't need the authority to hire over the summer. I'll second that. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Well, thank you.
I knew what that was, and I know all of that, they all know what that is. Um, okay, so twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five board meeting schedule. So we had talked about keeping it the same, um the first.
Thursday, there's actually a typo on our agenda that says Wednesday for today, but.
Oh boy, there is, look at that.
I wonder if that's my um, my uh psyche, my undercurrent of thought to suggest. Possibly considering it being on Wednesday again.
Going back to.
Going back to Wednesday.
That's what it was originally.
It was.
A few reasons, but I would say um a more global sort of community reason is that. Thursdays are when the P T O meeting is, and most of the time, it's not the same week, but sometimes we've had to like push it. And then it made it really, I think, at least for our family, but some other families to to make, but if it doesn't work for the, you know, the three of us.
It's not a problem for me.
The first Wednesday of the month, right?
Yep.
It's not a problem for me too, I actually prefer Wednesdays as well.
Okay.
And I would like, I I would rather go back to where we were.
Okay, well, thank you.
Does that work for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Cause I know there's no other.
Uh, right, to my knowledge, there were no other board meetings on that time.
So then.
The schedule in totality in the.
Right.
In the fall, and there was no conflict then, I have, I do not have knowledge that it has changed.
I don't think so either. So our first one would be September fourth.
And I'll do a whole calendar for you all and get it back to you.
I was just looking to see where Labor Day fell and what it was, that's why I was.
Yeah, no, that's awful.
Looking real quick, but.
So September fourth, okay. And then again, as as a follow up to today's meeting, I'll create. A document with all of the meetings for you, for you folks, so that you have it, and you can put them all into your calendars.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, so.
It work, it works for me too, cause I'd like to be going to P T O meetings as well, and yeah, and Thursdays tend to be a funky.
Ironically, my Thursdays are actually not, they were like, used to be the worst day, cause I saw patients all the way right till five fifteen and um. Now, that's not the case, but still, I think for other reasons, it'll be good, so.
I mean, no matter what, the fall is hard, because football.
Well, that's awesome, thank you.
Um, and Wednesday is gonna be tough, cause Connor has a football game, but that's fine. Um, okay, so old business, the school safety project, so I do have an update, cause we met, we had our community forum. We had about ten, ten to twelve people here. With lots of great questions, um I did take some notes, so we. Um Molly is gonna send, the one question was the financial impact, Molly is gonna send that to us. One of the things somebody asked is if we could check in with the select board to see if there's any funding. Um, through town grants and to help with the project since there will be some. Um benefits to the overall community and not just the school, so I am going to follow up. With the select board on that. Um, for example, like N Y, N Y A usage, um the town celebration, parking, Halloween, all of those types of things. That would naturally be able to utilize new parking.
Yeah, I mean, any of the events, Memorial Day period.
Yeah. Uh, one of the questions that came up was about the N Y A deed of right of way, which I need to follow up with Sue on. Um, to look through, um, the question was, they thought that this, this. Side part is the right of way to the N Y A field, so I need to look into that. Um, Molly and Ellen were working on the mill rate and they're getting that to us.
Yes, I will get that to you all.
Um, Chris did look into the stone wall question, um Jane, about removal of that. This small stone wall over here and um. It looks like we can because of the stat, she sent this, Sue sent the statute over.
Sue McKinnon?
Yes. So, um, because it's, it's not actually a um. Uh, well, it's not marking the boundaries of two properties, because this is all one property, it goes down the center of our property. It's show, um.
That is technically, is it technically not considered a boundary marker?
Right.
That's interesting, cause it used to be a boundary marker, cause there was another school there.
But because it's all one, now it's one plot now. From what I understand.
Yes, this is what I learned on the history night, it was very interesting.
So, I mean, that's something we will obviously keep in in um, in the conversation and make sure that we're not.
Respect those.
We're respecting the stones and not, yeah, and not doing anything we're not supposed to, so yes, it's on our, it's on our radar. At least, um, and then, sorry. Oh darn, no, I just lost the email, I was. Okay, um, one of the questions came, uh, oh, we talked about doing a um resident survey. So um, after all the communicate, so we are gonna have multiple community, community forums. Starting up again in the fall, um and then we discuss the potential of doing a a survey to the town. Um, things that were talked about, we're putting it in, um, and this is one of my checklist is, putting it in the Friends of the Library September newsletter. To give some highlights of what the project is and when we're in, um, let people know in town when we're meeting, because that is mailed to residents. So we can get some people that aren't necessarily in the electronic world or um part of the school. We looked into um permeable pavement, um, in in the possibilities of a. An environmental grant being used, uh if we use sustainable material, um Chris did um look into that a little bit. It's not really conducive to where we live, um because you can't put sand. Salt on it for what, like the bad weather, um and you, it it would be very, uh, it wouldn't be cost effective and. Um, we would have to have the sand removed like twice a year. Um, so that would be a big expense.
Jenny, you might have said this, I may have missed it, that you said there was about ten to twelve people, was, curious what the general breakdown was, was it majority folks who are. With kids in school?
No, actually, it was a majority of not kids in school. There was quite a few townspeople, um retirees, um, it was a pretty good mix, I would say. Of, um, there was a couple parents, couple newer parents with very young kids, um. Uh, and then there was a couple.
Oh, like not yet in the school?
Not yet in the school, and some that just started in the school, um. There was some retirees, um, and some people from town that have been here for a long time. So I thought it was a pretty good mix, um really great questions, some of, that's why some of the questions about like. N Y A right away and stuff came, because it's historical stuff. We're gonna work with, Helen's gonna work with Suzie to get a date on the calendar for fall, we wanna try for both, um. Another community night, maybe to even piggyback on one of the events that are already happening at the school. Um, and as well as doing something specifically for the paras in the building, cause they they covered the classroom teachers when. When we met with the teachers.
Sorry, I couldn't, why the paras?
Par- par professionals.
Yeah, so why are we going over the safety and security project with them?
Because they are stakeholders in the school, just like the staff.
So we're.
We just talk to them and get their input and ask questions, and same as what we did with the the community and ga- gave. This is the presentation of this is what, um, where we're at with the project, this is what it's looking like, and then um, do you have any questions? Or do you have any comments, do you, you know?
Then they weren't included in any prior.
No, we weren't able to get to all staff at the last forum that we did here at New Fields. Elementary school because of coverage issues, the way it worked out, the way that Suzie was able to line it up. Um, we were able to meet with all the classroom teachers and whatnot, and then the next time, we will meet with the par professionals. And other support staff.
Yeah, it just was a timing issue because of the end of year.
Jane, the only thought about sort of the next or additional meetings would be, um, there may be some people who can't come at night. Is there any opportunity to do it either like on a weekend morning?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something we we could definitely look into, doing it um on the weekend or during the day, or um, we can maybe do two. A couple.
Yeah, I know it's hard to, I'm not saying it's easy to do, but just.
No, I, I, I'm all, I'm all about getting as much information from the town and and as possible, so I have no problem with that, um. Um, and also, Chris is gonna be um putting a webpage together, a a landing page together on the website. With information that we can update as things come up and and have like frequently asked questions and things like that up there as well.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not. Super on top of this, but is there like a, like a running document or a project plan that we have put together? So that we can kind of all be aware of. What the next steps are, when the community project is, you know, the presentations are going to be. You know, what the kind of scope of the project is overarching, so that we have an idea of, this is what we've asked for. Um, this is where we're at, these are the next steps, that we have a really good idea of where this project is in regards to kind of where our decision making. Um, kind of piece next, that needs to take.
What needs to take place next, yeah.
Um, because I wasn't aware of a website or like.
That came out of this.
Okay, so.
It's not something we've done yet.
Okay, so that might be something that.
It was asked for by community members to have a place that they could go and look at things.
That's fantastic.
Within the SEU sixteen website.
Within the SEU sixteen.
Yeah, and I think that's great, and that, that definitely is great, but is it, is that, is that a decision that should come to us? To kind of like chat about first, or is that, cause I I just don't know about it, so. I wanna kind of stay on top of it as well, um, or is this the the purview of the chair? I'm just, and it's just a question versus like, where, what's the modus operandi of making sure that they kind of move forward with these types of decisions? Before we um kind of do a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I I would be a fan of um, if we're going to put something publicly out on a website, which I think all of us probably wanna do.
Yeah.
If maybe we can discuss either here at other meeting or whatever, how it's gonna look, maybe review the text, sort of like we do with policies.
As of right now, it's literally the the presentation that we gave.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying.
It was gonna be.
Like first round, it'd be good.
Yeah, excuse, go ahead.
Yeah.
But um, and I think to that point.
Yeah.
We were able to see that, you know, you shared that um with us before, which was really helpful.
Yeah.
Um, so um, I think just if we. I think putting that up would be fair, cause we've already shared that with the community, right, but then like any additional. Either F A Qs or like if there's additional.
Even decisions that the boards have made.
Yeah.
Um, you know, even some of the meeting minutes specific to this project on that site, things along those lines. So that you don't have to weed through video footage or anything like that.
Well, yeah, that, I don't even think we, like, you would have to bring that back, Jenny, cause that's already out of existence, just put, you know, put it in like a repository.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? I I don't know that I.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, um. I mean, I can, I'm happy to do a pro- like a a straw project plan. Because I also wor- my brain works like that as well because we'll have some dates coming up in in the fall. That we have to start making some decisions of as a board. So I can work with Ellen and Chris to kind of put in some. And and once we talk to Suzie about dates. And then um nothing's gone up on the website yet. So we can share that with the board first and then um if anybody has any changes or questions or.
That'd be great. If I can I make a recommendation um that I think there's a lot going on with this safety project. If you guys don't mind meeting once a month, it doesn't need to be the first Wednesday over the summer, just to kind of talk about the school safety project. Because if there's gonna be some decisions that we're going to be needing to be like on top of, aware of um in the fall. I think that might be a really helpful time for us to kind of sit down as a board and understand what the implications are. Where we need to go, how we need to do it. And I don't know if that needs to be just us and maybe you, Ellen. But it might be something that is gonna be really helpful for us to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row, all the eyes out at some T's, pros.
I mean, I don't even know if it needs to be once a month. Did I give you just once?
One thing to clarify is that the board will not be making any decisions until after the community input sessions are completed.
Right.
But I would, that totally makes sense. I'm thinking if we're gonna put something, for example, on on the website. And if there's updates between now and September, which hopefully there will be. Maybe that could be the.
It probably won't be, honestly, because we're not doing any community forums during the summer. So the, I mean, there I I I don't foresee there being any real movement in the project over the summer. Only because, well, it's only two, really two months and it nothing's really kind of happening in the summer.
Will we be, so that it's crazy how fast the summer goes, right?
Right.
But like, is there, when you said there's decisions that will be coming up in the fall, like.
I'm more thinking, I I'm more thinking of like, are we gonna do a bond hearing? Are and that's more like late fall, not not September fourth.
But what about like the det- the details of, like remember at one point we were talking about maybe putting out? I forget the language, Ellen. It wasn't put out to bid, but.
Right, that we have a quote and the difference between a quote and a bid or a proposal.
But like if we were to put or decide that we wanted the board to put out another one, so we had more than one information. Would it be valuable to have a? Or an August date to just.
Like that is something the board can discuss, you know. And present time right now, that it do you want to get more quotes? That would be, that would cost additional money to get the additional quotes. The quote that we received was done.
Pro bono.
Right, exactly. They did not charge us. Because and I think part of that had to do with the fact that we were able to use the impact fees to really get the scope of the work clarified.
How did that land Jenny with the people who were at the, I mean, I know it was like ten to twelve people, but.
They.
Do you know what I mean?
We explained that and they understood that that it's this is just, this is just a number to get it on the ballot. But of course, we would go out to multiple bids.
Because really that's, I think for me, a really important thing to.
At least that's that's what I I heard. I mean, and in the, it was asked at the same. And that's that's what we said the same thing and and it seemed that everybody was happy with that answer. Because we did say it would cost money to get more quotes.
What was the general feeling of that?
The general feeling was, well, of course you would go out to bid, but that it's it's to to not. They wanted us to spend as least amount of money as possible, so that they were comfortable with the due diligence of. And I passed out the um the breakdown that we had from the proposal, so they all have it as well. And we talked, we discussed how um it's it's a proposal, but it doesn't have like very detailed line items on purpose. Because it's a proposal, it's it's you don't know until you get in there, so.
I think they understood the overall process and the difference between a proposal and an actual bid. And the timelines involved. They seem to have some familiarity with that.
Yeah, they all seem to understand that, like anything that's going on the ballot, I mean, would would be a high level number. And then it would go out to bid and hopefully be less.
I think that's probably true, but I think it's also probably helpful to have the high level number be as low, high end. As needed, you know. And so like, I feel like over the last couple of months, various high numbers have been floating around. And we don't need to sort of commit to what that, for example, that bond number would be, but um now, of course. But it would be. Do we know ballpark what number we are are considering putting on the bond as like the high? The ceiling of the bond.
Point eight, it's one point eight.
One point eight.
And some change.
And that was sort of discussed in the public forum this once.
Yes. I walked them through the two point three that was originally quoted, the and we walked them through the steps. Um we walked them through um how we came back and and re um had them re-quote with some things taken out. And changed. And yeah, so I.
So it's sub two.
We, right.
Thank you.
Does that help? I mean, I I'm.
It does. It helps a little bit. I think I'd love, I'd still love to at least meet once this summer to kind of go over the scope. The project plan, um the impact on things that we need to think about, like environmental issues. You know, what other steps do we need to bring in um overarching, just so we're okay with everything moving forward? I mean, is.
Might also be another opportunity, oh, it will be another opportunity to have the public come if folks so chose. I don't know.
To have a school board meeting.
So we you want to have a school board meeting over the summer?
I mean.
Because if we the three of us meet, it's a school board meeting.
No, I'm saying I I don't know that I, I certainly don't think we need to do it every month. Not to bleep your original suggestion, Jane, but I I feel like maybe once before it's Ju- uh.
September.
September nine, so three months from now. It might be reasonable, but. And maybe, you know, the one time we zoomed me in because I was away, maybe if somebody, if it's impossible to find a date where we're all in town. Maybe we can have the two of two of us in person in one virtual. Or is that just not palatable?
I would love us all to be here.
No, 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 I mean, like, or is even having a meeting period not?
I would like it every month, but I would, I'm perfectly fine just having a one time, kind of like, let's talk about this in um.
I guess my question is, is I don't really know what forward motion other from today on is gonna happen. Before September fourth, when we meet again.
Well, like, for example, what if Jenny, um Sue says, actually, yeah, the select board does have town grants that we might be able to, like that. I don't anticipate that, but if that was something, that would be sort of cool to know before from from my perspective, for me, before September.
Well, I mean, that's stuff we could share via email. Do we, I gue- I guess that that's my que- it's how much.
What would be the, is your question, what would be the purpose of the board meeting other than to review information?
Right.
Would there be any, it sounds like there wouldn't be any action items.
I just, I guess if things are sent over email, I often feel that I don't know if I can even ask the question. And that's the part where I don't love.
That's fair, that there's no back and forth over email with the whole group. I mean, with me, yes, but not.
And I think that's maybe the only reason why I think there might be some value. And I, maybe we can restrict it to be like, this is the only item on this agenda and it will be thirty minute or whatever we want. If you want to keep it trimmed intentionally, I'm fine with that.
We still have to, we have to have thirty minutes no matter what.
Right, so it could be thirty one minutes.
Yeah, and I mean, just going over the timeline, where are we? What's, what are we planning? When are we planning on doing it? Yes, we can be, and then we can just be ready, ready to roll in September. Because we only meet once a month, so it's one of those things where it's just, if we can get a bit of a head start on this and make sure that we're aware of it. You need to leave, I'm so sorry.
If we did do, let me ask you this practical, if we did, would we have to decide the date now?
I can't decide the date now.
I don't, I don't want to, but like, is it something that we could?
Could we call a board meeting in the summer if we feel the need to?
It's possible. I mean, I think it's certainly out of the realm of what's typical for all of our boards. Most boards do not meet over the summer. Um some boards do have a re- retreat.
Like a working session?
Like a retreat over the summer, that's something.
Well, that's sort of what this is.
One way to maneuver this.
Is it public? A public retreat?
No, it's not a board meeting, it's a board retreat.
It's a board non-meeting.
Yeah, right, they call it a.
I thought they called it a working session, no?
They call it a.
I was like, the retreat.
Say it one more time.
But I I always like to rely on past practice, so to my knowledge, past practice is that they call it a retreat. And sometimes the retreat is too, you know, it can be for a variety of reasons.
And we don't need to decide on the date now if that's not something that you're able to do. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts over the next couple of months.
I mean, I think one thing to point out is that, you know, I I, you know, my recommendation is is that, you know, as your superintendent designate here. Is that, you know, we certainly want to be transparent about this project. We want, I, you know, we want to make sure everyone has. Um a clear understanding of the information that's been shared thus far. And that, you know, it is that people feel as though the information is accessible and whatnot. I think that, you know, that's a, that's definitely a top priority. One, and the other thing I was going to point out is that the the way the schedule that, you know, we have talked about so far. That um Chris and Jenny and I had developed is that, you know, we would have the community, two more community forums in in the fall. And I think at this point, they would, it would make sense for them both to be in September. So really, we won't have the community feedback until October, at the October meeting, in terms of like the board meeting scheduled. That will be when the community feedback is complete. Just additional information for you folks to share, to consider as you're making this decision.
That's fair. I guess what about this, um Ellen, if if as the summer goes on, information gets shared with us? That maybe one of us does have a question about and we would feel would be beneficial to possibly have.
I guess that's kind of where I was going with it.
Could I just say, Ellen, can we set something up?
Could we, is that something we could do?
Yes.
Like in the middle of the summer?
Yes.
So let's, let's, I would be.
Like as things, yes, as things come a lot.
So as needed.
Retreat if needed.
I'm, I'm, I would be supportive of that.
Because I I really don't foresee thing much more happening over the summer at this point. But I could be very wrong and I would, if I am wrong, I would absolutely want to meet. I agree. If there's a lot of, a lot of stuff coming in, yeah, that's fine. So what do you think? What, does that, do you think that?
I think we should plan for things to come up. I don't know, I'm a little bit of a, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I don't disagree, but I also think that there's gonna be something that comes up. To have something where we're thinking about, okay, we're probably gonna have a retreat, it's probably gonna be in whatever. We should probably think about making sure that it's at least earmarked um for a retreat, just in case something comes up. And we can look at some dates on that, just so we have it in our, in our, in our.
So literally maybe pencil something in, but not not notice it to the public and and can't have it not happen if it doesn't.
Right, we can, it's cancelable, something that we can say, okay, if something comes up, you know, in August, early August or late July. We have this time to sit down for however much time, you know, not right, you don't have to pick the date right now. But being able to sit down and go, okay, we now need to be able to um fully understand the project plan. Fully understand the scope, fully understand what um this survey is going to look like for the community. You know, what's changed, um you know, in in the project itself, what feedback have we gotten? Have there been any updates that we all need to be aware of? Just kind of at least penciling something like that in would make me feel better. Cancelable, within what, forty eight hours, is it?
Yes.
Well, Jane, if we pencil it in for our purposes, but not post, not, it's not.
Nothing gets posted until. However long beforehand. We should know a week before if it's, if we're gonna need to meet.
So it's a non-decision, like we're not voting on that, but like, can we just? Plan to email you, Ellen?
What if I, how about if I put together the project plan? Get all of the information in a document. So that everybody has everything. And then email it to Ellen. So you can email it out, right? That's how that would work?
Yes.
Okay, and then. I don't know, I'm literally not here all summer, so I don't know what. I don't know what would move forward. I'm I'm just, I really don't know what, if any, anything would move forward.
Right, the project is really on pause pending community input.
Right. At this point, that's the only, the update I just gave you was the community input.
Which I, thank you for, because I couldn't make it, that was awesome. Thank you.
So as, you know, as your designate here, I heard, I heard different feedback around, you know, is it a wait and see? Do we want to pencil something in? I, you know, it. My recommendation would be to wait and see because we're not get gathering additional information between now.
I mean, there is no plan to gather any more information between now and then. The the plan is to wait and and put a date on the calendar for September and that's it. But are you thinking there, you want more steps in between that?
I'd kind of want an option to review the project plan, ask questions on it, things along those lines. And take some time to really digest it a little bit more, where we're all here to kind of go through everything. Because we really haven't, we had, we've had one board meeting where all of us are here for the whole time versus Zoom. So just being able to understand it, and that might be my own edification, um just because I'm new. Into it, but I think the 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 timeline will be helpful. You know, if we wanted to be able to figure out, okay, do we need more quotes? What the scope is, all that other good stuff, and it just may be for me to be able to understand the project a little bit more and if anything does come up to make any changes.
So how about this? Why don't we, why don't I put together the document, this document? I'll send it to Ellen, she can send it to you and then.
And Bobby.
And well, yeah, you and Bobby, and then if. You guys still feel like we need to meet, we can work with Ellen to put something on the calendar. Yes.
I support, I support that.
Does that, how does that sound?
That's, okay. Do you even have time? Here, summer is pretty busy.
Well, life is busy, so it's fine, it's just, yeah, no, I mean, yeah, this is fine, I can do this.
So put everything together in in a streamlined, like more comprehensive package.
Yeah, kind of all the pieces that we've kind of sent separately, all the information and put it together. It might not be pretty. I mean, it'll be somewhat pretty.
That's okay, because I mean.
But I think it's good too to have the deadlines, like I, like what is the deadline if we were to do a bond hearing? What are the deadline, like what?
To flush out more of that time, there's a timeline slide on the, in the Google slides, I think we can flush it out further.
But flush it out further for into like future, like this is what we've done, but what, what we, yeah.
So if we have a timeline on all of the, when are the community, what is planned for the community?
We do not have those dates yet. That is my action item. We are waiting on.
No, no, that wasn't, that wasn't a question.
Oh, yeah.
That wasn't a question, that was just a a general statement.
As part of the timeline, the community dates.
Yeah, the community dates, whether they're TBD, but how many, you know, what are the, you know, as a board, we. The community dates, whether they're TBD, but how many, you know, what are the, you know, as a board, we probably should be taking a look at. How many, what's gonna be covered, who's gonna be there, because if more than one of us is there, it's a board meeting, we're talking about board.
You could come as an, and with your parent hat on or your community member hat on.
Yeah.
Not your board member hat on.
Right, which is always gonna be hard, um, but, yes, so then, um. And then if we wanna get more quotes, when do we need to get those?
And I did make it very clear in the community forum that they are all, if anybody is welcome to come to every school board meeting and ask questions as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's great.
That was, and on social media, I said the same thing and everywhere, so.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's, I think moving to Wednesdays might be better. In the new year, it's always gonna be good, just conflicts with so much, and right now, it's the end of the year, no one has time. It's crazy, um, but yeah, let's do that then, um.
Okay, so I'm gonna email you, Helen.
Okay.
Helen, not Helen.
No problem.
Good god.
It's crazy.
Okay, so do we have anything else?
I don't have anything, and I'm gonna assume that Bobby doesn't.
Then I am going to motion to adjourn at seven eleven.
Oh. I'll second that, sorry.
All in favor?